I hereby call the Palm Springs Special Study Session Meeting of March 29, 2022 to order. I invite those who can and would like to join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. City Clerk, could you please call roll?
Councilmember Holsthage?
Here.
Councilmember Kors?
Here.
Councilmember Woods?
Here.
Mayor Protem Garner?
Here.
Mayor Middleton?
Present.
All members are present.
This evening, we have a special study session on the issue of vacation rentals. It is the only issue that is on our agenda this evening. We have no action items to vote on, but we may give discretion at somewhere during the course of the meeting to staff. Councilmember Woods, would you like to say something?
Yes, I will have to recuse myself as I have a financial interest in a home share. And although very different than a vacation rental, it's best that I just don't participate in the discussion at this point.
Thank you. The next item is public testimony. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on the study session item only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. Tonight, the city clerk will be contacting speakers via telephone.
Off Top Data, you're live with the City Council. You have two minutes to provide your comments, and you may begin.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Afzal from the Hilton. I've been here for the past decade in the House of Attorney business. I fully support and in favor of looking at the five-year history of the data for vacation rental since we made major revisions to our vacation rental ordinance in 2017. The ordinance, in my opinion, is working. Enforcement has been great because of the processes, infrastructure, make this ordinance work. You also have great enforcement. So this ordinance works and the post-economic recovery that the city today has in respect to ordinance changes that you may consider. One more thing I'd like to let know that the inventory at some of the year because of special demand and analysis that we don't have enough inventory. We try to restrict and cut down too much of the inventory. I can guarantee over a period of time...
Mr. Data, your connection is a little weak. Do you mind if we give you a call back so your comments can come through clearly? Thank you. Lou Stelgato, you're live with the City Council. You have two minutes to provide your comments, and you may begin.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Lou Stelgadio, and I am the Director of Homeowner Experience at Orange Palm Vacation Homes. Having just celebrated 50 years of experience in up-closification rental management, I wanted to address the non-correlation of citations to the number of stays we have in this beautiful city. If you look at the number of vacation rental stays compared to the number of noise citations, only 0.003% of guest stays in 2021 resulted in a citation. If this sounds like a small number, that's because it is. The amount of disturbances are relatively few in number irrespective of density. The city and the Office of Special Programs compliance deserve credit for operating an airtight system of enforcement, and people are following the rules. That's all I wanted to mention, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
I know task forces and committees have been used in the past.
Mr. Hoben? It's your turn. Just a moment. Bruce Hoben, you're live with the City Council. You have two minutes to provide your comments, and you may begin.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Afzal from the Hilton Palm Springs. I've been in the city for over three decades, and I fully support and I'm in favor of looking at the five-year history of data since we made major revisions to our vacation rental ordinance in 2017. The ordinance, in my opinion, is working. Enforcement has been great because of the processes, infrastructure, make this ordinance work. You also have great enforcement. So this ordinance works and the post-economic recovery that the city today has in respect to ordinance changes that you may consider. One more thing I'd like to let know that the inventory at some of the year because of special demand and analysis that we don't have enough inventory. We try to restrict and cut down too much of the inventory. I can guarantee over a period of time...
Mr. Data, your connection is a little weak. Do you mind if we give you a call back so your comments can come through clearly? Thank you. Lou Stelgato, you're live with the City Council. You have two minutes to provide your comments, and you may begin.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Lou Stelgadio, and I am the Director of Homeowner Experience at Orange Palm Vacation Homes. Having just celebrated 50 years of experience in up-closification rental management, I wanted to address the non-correlation of citations to the number of stays we have in this beautiful city. If you look at the number of vacation rental stays compared to the number of noise citations, only 0.003% of guest stays in 2021 resulted in a citation. If this sounds like a small number, that's because it is. The amount of disturbances are relatively few in number irrespective of density. The city and the Office of Special Programs compliance deserve credit for operating an airtight system of enforcement, and people are following the rules. That's all I wanted to mention, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
I know task forces and committees have been used in the past. Mr. Hoben?
It's your turn. Just a moment. Bruce Hoben, you're live with the City Council. You have two minutes to provide your comments, and you may begin.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. I am Bruce Hoben, a board member of Vacation Rental Owners and Neighbors Palm Springs, or also known as VRON. We are truly looking forward to working together to make changes to our vacation rental ordinance. However, there is now a new process in place to make changes to any ordinance. Could we please hear tonight from a City Council member or the City Manager on the timetable for making revisions to the VR ordinance? I know task forces and committees have been used in the past, but I'd love to know what your expectations of the Council are with the new visioning process. Before any discussions involving policy or ordinance changes, right now, we only have some other requested data we can review tonight. When can we expect the rest of the data to be provided for another study session before we really delve down into policy? Looking forward to your answers. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Data, you're live with the City Council.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Afzal from the Hilton Palm Springs. I've been in the city for over three decades, and I fully support and I'm in favor of looking at the five-year history of data since we made major revisions to our vacation rental ordinance in 2017. The ordinance, in my opinion, is working. Enforcement is also working because the city did a great job in creating the processes and infrastructure to make this ordinance work. We've also built a great enforcement team. So this ordinance really works, and the post-COVID economic recovery demand that the city be judicious in its actions in respect to ordinance changes that you may consider. One more thing I want everyone to keep in mind that due to certain cities in the Coachella Valley banning vacation rental and knowing that we have some very huge special events that take place year-round, having cut down that inventory of vacation rental might in the long run hurt our industry because if there is no inventory available, the promoters are not going to continue to have those events. Thank you for listening to me. Have a great day.
David Feltman, you're live with the City Council. You have two minutes to provide your comments, and you may begin.
Okay, good evening, members of the City Council and staff. Thank you for this time. I laud you for holding this session tonight and examining the data that's been compiled. One of the issues that will come up in the course of the review of the ordinance is housing issues and housing availability and housing prices. And I would like to ask the City Council to hold a similar study session on issues related to housing. I think it would be unfortunate if one input, which is houses related to vacation rentals, drives a policy change on vacation rentals when the overall housing issues deserve a much more in-depth examination. Several months ago, I personally put in a PRA to try to find out the 10-year history of the councils or the cities' approval of planned development projects so I could try to do some research on the size of those projects and the average prices of them. All I can give to you tonight is the anecdotal data, which is listening to the council approve plans when they say at the end, "Well, how much are these going to cost?" they say to the developers, and the answer is $600,000, $800,000, $800 to $1 million. I've heard very few answers that would come into the territory of lower-middle-income housing. There are two projects in the pipeline I know about those, but all the rest of them at $800,000, $1 million, $2 million, there's no collected data on those. I would urge you to hold a study session concurrently with this work to make sure we understand the full range of inputs into the housing conditions and situation in Palm Springs. Thank you.
Michael Valleo, you're live with the City Council. You have two minutes to provide your comments, and you may begin.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us. My name is Michael Valleo. I own and hold to be vacation rentals and live in Palm Springs. I just wanted to mention, we hear a few people talking about the fact that, you know, other cities have restricted or banned vacation rentals, and Palm Springs should be following suit. I think it's important to remember that we are not other cities. Palm Springs, the City Council did a great job of crafting a model ordinance for vacation rentals back in 2017. It's one of the strictest rental ordinances in the country, and we've done a lot of research on this, as you did at the time. It's been modeled, it's been used as an example, as a model for other cities around the country, and it's working. We have a robust enforcement department. The data shows, the data that was just released by the city shows that there were over 44,000 guest stays in 2021 in vacation rentals, representing over 220,000 visitors to Palm Springs. And out of those more than 44,000 stays, only 130 noise citations were issued. 130 citations out of over 44,000 stays. This ordinance works. It is fantastic, and other cities should be copying it. I think that for us to say, you know, "We should do what La Quinta did, we should do what Cathedral City did," that's not the road we want to go down. Palm Springs is unique. They didn't put the enforcement in place, they didn't put the stricter ordinance in place that our City Council so wisely did, and it's working. Thanks very much.
Bruce Younger, you're live with the City Council. You have two minutes to provide your comments, and you may begin.
Good evening. I want to thank the City of Palm Springs for crafting a well-designed ordinance to manage the issue of vacation rentals, and especially commend the robust enforcement of the ordinance because without enforcement, the law is meaningless. While short-term rentals have been a benefit to many, it is also a contributing factor, I believe, to the lack of available housing in the city. Palm Springs is in a serious housing crisis, and it is only getting worse. I personally know two long-term local residents who are currently desperately trying to locate housing after receiving notice from their landlords that the leases are not being renewed. I have never seen it so bad, and I've been in and around this city full of part-time since the 1980s. Short-term rentals are a major reason why the city's population failed to grow since the last census, as the permanent housing stock is being removed and converted over to these units. The short-term rental program needs to be capped. I'm not sure if that should be in total units or in a percentage basis, but it needs to be capped before things get worse.
Mr. Data, you're live with the city council.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Astha Dada from the Hilton Palm Springs. I've been in the city for over three decades and I fully support and I'm in favor of looking at the five-year history of data since we made major revisions to our vacation rental ordinance in 2017. The ordinance, in my opinion, is working. Enforcement is also working because the city did a great job in creating the processes and infrastructure to make this ordinance work. We've also built a great enforcement team. So this ordinance really works and the post-COVID economic recovery demand that the city be judicious in its actions with respect to ordinance changes that you may consider. One more thing I want everyone to keep in mind that due to certain cities in the Coachella Valley banning vacation rental and knowing that we have some very huge special events that takes place year-round, having cut down that inventory of vacation rental might in the long run hurt our industry because if there is no inventory available, the promoters are not going to continue to have those events. Thank you for listening to me. Have a great day.
David Feltman, you're live with the city council. You have two minutes to provide your comments and you may begin.
Okay, good evening, members of the city council and staff. Thank you for this time. I applaud you for holding this session tonight and examining the data that's been compiled. One of the issues that will come up in the course of the review of the ordinance is housing issues and housing availability and housing prices. And I would like to ask the city council to hold a similar study session on issues related to housing. I think it would be unfortunate if one input, which is houses related to vacation rentals, drives a policy change on vacation rentals when the overall housing issues deserve a much more in-depth examination. Several months ago, I personally put in a PRA to try to find out the tenure history of the councils or the cities' approval of planned development projects so I could try to do some research on the size of those projects and the average prices of them. All I can give to you tonight is the anecdotal data, which is listening to the council approve plans when they say at the end, well, how much are these going to cost? They say to the developers and the answer is $600,000, $800,000, $800 to $1 million. I've heard very few answers that would come into the territory of lower-middle-income housing. There are two projects in the pipeline. I know about those, but all the rest of them at $800,000, $1 million, $2 million, there's no collected data on those. I would urge you to hold a study session concurrently with this work to make sure we understand the full range of inputs into the housing conditions and situation in Palm Springs. Thank you.
Michael Vallejo, you're live with the city council. You have two minutes to provide your comments and you may begin.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us. My name is Michael Vallejo. I own and operate vacation rentals and live in Palm Springs. I just wanted to mention, we hear a few people talking about the fact that, you know, other cities have restricted or banned vacation rentals and Palm Springs should be following suit. I think it's important to remember that we are not other cities. Palm Springs, the city council did a great job of crafting a model ordinance for vacation rentals back in 2017. It's one of the strictest rental ordinances in the country and we've done a lot of research on this, as you did at the time. It's been modeled, it's been used as an example, as a model for other cities around the country and it's working. We have a robust enforcement department. The data shows, the data that was just released by the city shows that there were over 44,000 guest stays in 2021 in vacation rentals, representing over 220,000 visitors to Palm Springs. And out of those more than 44,000 stays, only 130 noise citations were issued. 130 citations out of over 44,000 stays. This ordinance works. It is fantastic and other cities should be copying it. I think that for us to say, you know, we should do what La Quinta did, we should do what Cathedral City did, that's not the road we want to go down. Palm Springs is unique. They didn't put the enforcement in place. They didn't put the stricter ordinance in place that our city council so wisely did and it's working. Thanks very much.
Bruce Younger, you're live with the city council. You have two minutes to provide your comments and you may begin.
Good evening. I want to thank the city of Palm Springs for crafting a well-designed ordinance to manage the issue of vacation rentals and especially commend the robust enforcement of the ordinance because without enforcement, the law is meaningless. While short-term rentals have been a benefit to many, it is also a contributing factor, I believe, to the lack of available housing in the city. Palm Springs is in a serious housing crisis and it is only getting worse. I personally know two long-term local residents who are currently desperately trying to locate housing after receiving notice from their landlords that the leases are not being renewed. I have never seen it so bad and I've been in and around this city full of part-time since the 1980s. Short-term rentals are a major reason why the city's population failed to grow since the last census as the permanent housing stock is being removed and converted over to these units. The short-term rental program needs to be capped. I'm not sure if that should be in total units or in a percentage basis, but it needs to be capped before things get worse. With other desert cities further restricting short-term rentals, the pressure is only going to increase on Palm Springs to pick up the slack. And the city needs to make providing affordable housing the number-one priority. I'm tired of hearing about how much money it generates. If that's just all we're going to care about, let's just convert it all to one big motel six and then we'll see this town turning to a soulless, empty place. So please, please consider capping this before it gets totally out of control. Thank you very much.
Kenny Cassidy, you're live with the city council. You have two minutes to provide your comments and you may begin.
Thank you. Good evening, city council members and staff. My name is Kenny Cassidy. I'm on the board of V-Ron and work for a vacation rental agency. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight regarding short-term rentals and your study session. It's been suggested that density of permitted short-term rentals in a given neighborhood is a problem. In fact, density and complaints do not go hand in hand. Earlier today, a table was submitted to the council and that table shows density is not a driver of disturbance. The city's data actually shows there's no correlation between density and nuisance. In fact, some of the most permit-dense neighborhoods with vacation rentals have the lowest instance of complaint calls, citations or suspensions. Take Racquet Club Estates, for example. Racquet Club Estates has a 37% vacation rental density, but just 4% of all citations among the permits in that neighborhood. While it ranks number one in density, it ranks number 26 in citations. There are several examples of this, especially in neighborhoods with a higher percentage of second homes, such as Talkless River Estates, El Rancho Vista Estates, Twin Palms, all with higher density yet fewer complaints. Across the city, while the total number of permits is up, complaint calls and citations are actually down. Clearly, we need to dig deeper to understand if and where there even is a problem before we can try to change anything with the ordinance. Thank you for your efforts and for your consideration.
Francine McDougall, you're live with the city council. You have two minutes to provide your comments and you may begin.
Thank you. Hi there. My name's Francine McDougall and I've been a vacation rental owner in Palm Springs for over 10 years and I'm also a board member of V-Ron PS. I'd like to briefly touch on density for a second. A review of currently suspended vacation rental properties, which are properties that have received three citations in 12 months, shows they are small in number, just nine in 2021, and they're not present in any one neighborhood. In fact, the highest number in one neighborhood is two properties. Also, over the past 18 months, the data shows the city has seen a 23% decline in citations. This decline reflects a near-record low in 2021 of 190. Because of these numbers, we know that the ordinance is working, but we also know there are some areas that need clarification and we look forward to the opportunity to discuss these with you. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that concludes public comments.
Study session special item, the agenda now continues with the discussion of short-term vacation rental priorities and processes for short-term vacation rentals in the city. At this time, I would like to invite staff to present their report.
Good evening, council. Tonight, we return to present the data for vacation rentals in Palm Springs. Staff has prepared for you a comprehensive state of vacation rentals report outlining the data that staff maintains. A lot of work went into this report and we hope that it meets all of your requests. Before we begin our presentation, there were some data requests that we were unable to prepare at the staff level. I did want to touch on these as I'm sure you noticed they were missing. The heat maps to demonstrate density, total number of second homes used as vacation rentals, what is happening with new homes in comparison to census data, and occupancy rates, average daily rental rate, impact to hospitality, capacity and housing markets. These items were beyond the data maintained by our staff and available to us. However, at the conclusion of our presentation, should you still require this information or different information, kindly provide staff direction and we will do our best to accommodate your request. We'll go ahead and move into the PowerPoint. At this point, we'd like to go through our presentation and any questions you have, we can answer at the conclusion. Vacation rentals have been regulated here in the city of Palm Springs since 2008 with the introduction of ordinance number 1748. It was revised in 2014, 2016 and 2017, which is the current ordinance 1918. Ordinance 19 has become a model vacation rental ordinance, not just here locally, it is also across California and the United States. We receive calls daily for our input and feedback on cities that are crafting their ordinances. So we know that it is a strong ordinance. It was well-written. There are core requirements of the ordinance, which we feel helps enforcement. We require permit. The each permit holder also pays transient occupancy tax. There's occupancy limits, local response contacts that are required. This is really helpful because there's not an opportunity to correct any disturbances. If there's a disturbance, they are cited and that's a strike against the property. We also have a 24-hour vocational rental hotline. We are contracted with Central Communications who operate the hotline. They report all nuisances and disturbances, not just for vacation rentals, but any homes in the city. There's a brief outline of the revisions made over time. A lot of the core requirements have always been in place. These were added to enhance enforcement throughout the years. The minimum age for responsible renters was raised from 18 to 25. The provision of the outdoor amplified music, lockup trash service, and the registration number required on advertisements. These have been critical in identifying unregistered rentals. In 2018, the additional regulations, which are currently in place, added further restrictions. It also limited each person to only hold one vacation rental permit. There were some owners who did have multiple and they were allowed to be grandfathered in. Those are very few in number. We really spend a lot of staff time to ensure that all registrants only have one permit. There's a limit on the amount of contracts, which is the number of stays that individuals can rent their home. We also have a three-strike and suspension risk. So when you receive a citation, it is a strike. If you do receive a strike, your property is suspended. You cannot operate as a short-term rental. You can operate as a long-term should you choose. There is a $5,000 fine and permanent ineligible ability to operate a vacation rental for anyone who is found to be operating illegally. There's also a required check-in meet and greet and we have a friends and family list for homeowners to provide us a list of their friends and families who can stay at their home without having to pay the transient occupancy tax. And there's also restrictions on when maintenance can be done to the home so it does not disturb the neighbors. At this time, I'm going to hand over the presentation to Patrick Clifford. He prepared all of this data. He worked really hard to go through the numerous mechanisms we have to gather it and prepared it so he can best present this to you and answer any questions you have on it.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Middleton, Mayor Pro Tem, Garner Council. The first data that I would like to discuss with you this evening is regarding our registrant review. As of December 31, 2021, 97% of the vacation rentals were vacation rentals in the city and 3% were considered home shares. Vacation rental owners and agencies must annually apply for a vacation rental permit. On average, our department processes 191 applications monthly. In the staff report on page 12, the table provided is a registrant review and is sorted by the percentage of vacation rentals to the number of households in a specific neighborhood. This table also shows any increase or decrease in vacation rental registrations by neighborhood between 2017 and 2021. From our information that we gathered, 6% of the homes in Palm Springs are vacation rentals. Department staff reviewed how many active permits in 2017 have remained active in 2021 and we found a count over 1,100. But we also noticed that these may have been properties that although they were active in 2017, may have sold to another owner at a later date and then applied to become a vacation rental. And we can still determine such information, but we need to look over the information just to be as accurate as possible. Also included in the presentation this evening are two maps that council asked for. One showing the locations of vacation rentals across the city by neighborhoods and then as well as a density map. If staff could please pull up the saturation map on the screen and we can discuss further. Let's have the other map if possible, please. So this map will be available in the lobby after tonight's meeting. What we did, we're working with our IT department. We were able to provide a list of our vacation rentals and apply this to our city's GIS system and then appropriately put pinpoints of all the locations across the city. The second map that we are able to provide, if staff can bring up our density map, is a map with the same point data, but just converted into a density map. This density analysis was used using the kernel analysis tool. GIS team worked hard to have this map created. From my understanding, how the kernel analysis tool works is that it takes the point data provided and evaluates it based on how close and how far vacation rentals are in relation to each other. And so how this map is shown is that the darker blue area is considered to be a higher density with relation to the proximity of vacation rentals and a lighter blue, if not white, is really limited, not as dense vacation rentals. Again, this map will be also provided in the lobby after tonight's meeting. If we can, please go back to the PowerPoint. Additionally, staff, we were able to identify that 84% of the vacation rentals are single-family residences, 16% are condominiums, and 4% are others such as a commercial property or a duplex multifamily dwelling. Additionally, 6% of the registered properties in the city are considered estate homes, which is a property that has five or more bedrooms. Moving along to contract summaries, each vacation rental excluding home shares must submit a summary for a guest stay that is 28 days or less. For 2021, we reviewed the median data regarding how many summaries were submitted by each property. For owner-operated properties, median summaries submitted was 19 and agencies was 20. For both owner-operated and agency-operated properties, we identified how many new summaries were submitted, how many were canceled, and also looked at average length of stay for each stay. Both reviews of owner-operated and agency-operated properties show an average guest's length of stay of five days. This is the same table that was provided in the previous slide, but this is for agency-operated contract summaries. We then placed total summary submissions into nine buckets with each bucket consisting of a range of four. This shows where properties fall into with respect to total contracts being used. For example, on this slide, the owner summary slide, we see that 153 properties submitted between at least 33 and 36 contract summaries for the year. And on this slide, we see that 118 agency-managed properties submitted between 33 and 36 summaries. Overall, the data shows that 42 neighborhoods with a contract summary submitted to the city, a median of 19 to 20 stays for each property and little over 44,000 summaries submitted in 2021. On this slide, it shows a snapshot of a table that is included in the staff report on page 16. This table shows a breakdown of contract summaries for each neighborhood and an average based on registered permits in the neighborhood. The next data in the report is regarding our vacation rental hotline. The hotline provides information on each call that comes in and categories these calls as an active nuisance or a non-active nuisance regardless of if the property is a registered vacation rental or not. An active nuisance may include music at a property, loud occupants, or a trash concern. A non-active nuisance includes calls that are referred to the office or the website and usually contain requests on how to apply for a permit or what time the office opens, but also includes hang-ups or disconnected calls. This report this evening focuses on active nuisance calls only. Out of the total active nuisance calls received, 76% of the calls were active nuisances at a registered vacation rental. Looking at the active nuisance calls that were called into the hotline specifically for vacation rental properties, calendar year 2020 received the most calls at 991 and this past year, 2021, received the fewest calls at 576. The department also looked at active nuisance calls by year and quarter and while calls are received throughout the year, quarter two, which is April, May and June, received the most. Slide also includes active nuisance calls that were not associated with a registered vacation rental. And for reference, a table was provided in the staff report on page 18 that shows a breakdown of active nuisance calls to a registered vacation rental by neighborhood. The department also took the information from the hotline and looked at which days of the week received the most. 75% of the calls occurred between Friday and Sunday, with most being on Saturday. The department broke down the calls into four blocks of time across a 24-hour time period. What the data has shown is that most calls are received between 6:00 PM and midnight, followed by noon to 6:00 PM. This slide is similar to the previous slide, but shown in a percentage. As shown, close to 40% of the calls are received between 6:00 PM and midnight. Lastly, with respect to the hotline, the department broke down the data down by time and by day. This data shows us that the highest percentage of calls occur on Saturdays between noon The city provides residents multiple resources to report nuisance concerns regarding vacation rentals. Residents can report concerns through the hotline, the city's My Palm Springs app, or call the police non-emergency line. The citation data provided reflected in this report reflects citations issued to vacation rentals from all of these sources. In calendar year 2021, 190 citations were issued by code compliance officers, a decrease of 55% from 2018 and a decrease of 23% from 2020. Code compliance officers issued the most citations in 2018 with 425 citations issued. The most common of all violations found is amplified sound audible at the property line. Here we have citations issued by year. As shown, the most citations were in calendar year 2018. Included in the staff report on page 23 is a table that breaks down by year citations issued in each neighborhood. issued in each neighborhood. This table on the slide references five neighborhoods that in total between 2017 and 2021 received Staff reviewed citations issued for amplified noise by year. 2020 was the year where most amplified noise citations were issued. This data also includes violations where multiple violations were found, for example, music audible at the property line and over the permitted limit of vehicles. The department took the citation data and identified the five most common violations found. Music or amplified noise at the property line is the most common and operating without a vacation rental permit is the second most common violation. The Vacation Rental Ordinance has language with respect to violations found at a property. If a property receives three citations within a 12-month period, the vacation rental permit is suspended for a two-year period. Currently, the department has 14 properties suspended. The department is currently analyzing and looking at data regarding citations by neighborhood and including the type of citation issued, but this information may include larger data sets and may be appropriate to look at individually. Lastly, the department is looking to review complaints received towards citations issued, but the department needs to further analyze this data to make sure that complaints from all sources, including the My Palm Springs app and Palm Springs Non-Emergency, are included in this review. Thank you, counsel, for your time, and that concludes my portion of this, and I'll be available for any questions after the end of the presentation.
At this time, I'd like to go over our transient occupancy tax in relationship to vacation rentals. Every operator is required to have a TOT permit, our transient occupancy tax permit. Every month, they have to remit that tax to the city. The current rate for the transient occupancy tax is 11.5%. In July of this year, an additional 1% Tourism Bureau Improvement District Tax was imposed on our vacation rental homes. The funds are used specifically for marketing and destination program development. Funds are deposited in the Community Commercial Fund and General Fund and used for a variety of expenditures throughout the city that benefit the community. Here is an overview of the TOT received from fiscal year 1617 through 2122 year-to-date. So you can see the amount that was generated with 2021 at $15 million collected in TOT. This is just a graph that demonstrates that same information, and you can see the increase that was, that we have experienced here in the city. That does conclude our presentation. If you had any questions, we are here to answer them for you.
Are, it is, is it the pleasure of the council to jump first into questions, or do we want to do questions and comments together? Questions first? All right, and let's try to do that. I see the Mayor Pro Tem jumping right up, so let's start there.
Thank you. Veronica, I'm a little bit confused about our home share in vacation rentals. So for vacation rentals, right, it's, or I'm sorry, let's see, for home shares, it has, you, the owner has to be on property during the stay. Is that correct?
Correct. So the home share, they're renting out either a portion of their home, two bedrooms, one bedroom, or they have a casita that they're renting, but they're in the home the entire stay.
So if I had a house and I wanted to rent my house while I was out of town, that would be considered a vacation rental?
Correct, if the stay was 28 days or less.
Okay. How many of our, you know, 2,000 vacation rentals are owner-occupied vacation rentals?
64.
64 only? Okay, thank you. So, okay, so I'm a little bit confused, I'm still confused, because if there's a difference...
By definition of our ordinance, every vacation rental is a second residence because the spirit of the ordinance states that a vacation rental is a secondary and ancillary use. So it's defined as their secondary home. We can do a deeper dive, but it was difficult to determine how many were occupied by the owner primarily, and they only rented one week their entire house to some guests. We just didn't have the data available to gather this quickly, but we can if you'd like us to return with that.
Okay, that's, that's something I'm interested in because I saw in here that there were, you know, about 280 that were only used for, only had four stays or less. And so I would be interested to know if those 280 homes, are they sitting vacant except for, you know, a couple of times a year, or is it that the owner lives there and then only goes out of town twice a year and that's when they rent them? So I think that would be helpful for me, because one of the concerns that I have is how many vacant properties are, do we have in our city?
We do have many properties that rent seasonal, so they will rent for six months of the year and the other six months do part-time. So that's another factor when you see those numbers.
Okay, thank you. So that, that is something in the future that I think would be really helpful so that we can get an understanding of really what we're looking at here, because I think a lot of people have this idea that vacation rentals are only used for vacation rental purposes the entire year, but if there's people who are here six months out of the year as, you know, part-time residents, that I think that's a, a good distinction that we need to know.
Other questions? Councilmember Hallstritch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I can just ask a follow-up question, thank you for that question, Mayor Pro Tem. I think that's really interesting, too, and yeah, maybe one way we could get there is the number of contracts, but we also collect the owner data, right? So we would have the address of the LLC or the individual trust or the individual owner and sort of if they're using their rental at that home, you know, that's their primary residence versus if it's an out-of-town investor or something like that. We have that information in general, right?
Yes, we could gather that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll jump on that. I'm really interested in knowing, when it comes to vacation rentals, how many of them have a owner who is in residence for multiple months of the year? And I'm not sure how to accurately get that information, but I think that's something we need to know.
We can work on that for you.
Are there other questions? Well, I want to commend you for the data that came back to us. We, a couple of weeks ago, asked you for a tremendous amount of, of data, and we got back some really very well-organized information that was very, very helpful. I would like to follow up on one question that has surfaced to me, and that's in the housing profile at the end of the report, where largely we seem to be using 2010 census data. At what point do we believe 2020 census data will be available?
Patrick, did you want to? Patrick is the one who gathered that information. We did diligently search for it. The 2010 was the most recent available to us. I don't...
Yes, thanks for the question, Mayor Middleton. Yeah, the data that we have for the housing was 2010. I don't have any information when or where I can get the 2020, but I am really interested in getting that, and I'll look to see if I can include that in our next report.
Could you, could you do some follow-up and, and report back to us? This is not the first time that in public policy requests around 2020 census data has been asked, and the issue is the Department of Census really has been very slow, and we all know that. Councilmember Kors.
Great, thank you, Mayor. So one, one data that we've seen before in this in here, that 6% of all housing has a vacation rental permit. But we, we don't allow them in apartments, most condos or a lot of condos don't allow them at all, a lot of homes and HOAs don't allow them at all. We can see that in some of the neighborhoods. So of the, and we don't allow them in multifamily homes except duplexes if one is owner-occupied. So we have very few of those, as we can see. So looking at the single-family homes, do we have a sense what percentage are now vacation rental permitted? Or do we not? We don't really know how many single-family homes we have yet, right?
We do not have that information available. It was just the timeline was difficult to gather that, but again, this is additional information that we can work with outside agencies to obtain.
Right, so I think it's fair to assume we have a lot more than 6% of single-family homes have vacation rental permits, given all the ones that are not allowed to have them, right? So just for the public to understand that distinction, which is why we see some neighborhoods with the saturation we do, which are mostly single-family home neighborhoods. And I don't know, if you don't know this, that's fine, but I know we had 271 you shared that were operating without a certificate, and so the owners of those homes, unless there was a finding that they actually weren't breaking the rules, are permanently suspended from having a vacation rental in Palm Springs, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just want the public to know that, and as far as I know, the vast majority, if not close to all, that was the penalty for them.
Correct. This past year, there were 13 properties that were founded that appealed, and all of them were upheld, so they're permanently eligible.
Okay, great, thank you. I appreciate that, and thanks, this is really, this is really helpful to go through ahead of the meeting, and how quickly you pulled this much data together in a way that was so easy to follow is amazing. So thank you both so much for your work on this.
There was a data point that I was looking for that I reached out to individuals in the industry, and what I was told is that in Palm Springs, we have 5,400 hotel rooms, and within the 2,300 vacation rentals, we have 6,908 bedrooms. I know that our data on vacation rentals includes the number of bedrooms that we believe is be, is allowed, so I have no reason to, to doubt the accuracy of these numbers, but diligence says we should verify.
Absolutely.
And so I would ask, both with the number of hotel rooms, the number of bedrooms total, that gives us a sense of what our capacity is in the town at any given time. If these numbers are, are correct, and I believe they are very close to being correct, then something better than half of the rooms available for rent in our city are vacation rentals. Mr. Dada made note of this, but most of our hotels are occupying right now at very close to 100% capacity. If that is true, then any elimination of rooms from vacation rentals would necessarily be fewer rooms available for those who want to visit our city. And I think, I know people feel very strongly one way or another on that issue, but we need to be at least honest with ourselves that any reduction means a reduction in availability of people to come to our city. Are there other questions that folks have? Because we, it's just four of us, we can go back and forth a little bit.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I like going back and forth better as you say things. It triggers questions for me. Do you have a sense, and by the way, the report is very, very excellent, really, really good work pulling together all this data in a digestible, clear way for the public. It's a really amazing report and presentation that you did, so thank you for that. I'm wondering if you looked at the demands, this is a supply and it's a demand issue, right? So sort of the demand of what we're seeing in terms of applications submitted and how long it takes, you know, and what we're seeing in terms of the increase, if there is one, in applications for permits and what those trends are. And you might not be able to answer that offhand. I know that wasn't one of the data points necessarily, but I'm just wondering your sense in that. If we know our housing market's on fire, we know that California and our region's in a housing crisis, so there's so many factors here, and I'm just trying to get a handle on, like, what's that demand side for vacation rentals right now or over time?
Yes, thank you, great question. In fact, I am pulling up the information because we did take a snapshot of, as of today, how many new applications we have in queue as far as vacation rentals go, and I'm trying to get it right here. I had it listed, but bear with me one moment. Pull it, but I believe it was 76 new applications we have in queue right now just for new applications. And on top of that, we have over, we process monthly average 100-plus applications just to renew on an annual basis. So as far as what we've just noticed in conversation in staff, we have noticed that we are receiving an increase of vacation rental applications. And are these new properties that are not been vacation rentals? What we've seen most of is a lot of homes that were vacation rentals that are sold and now are still continuing to be vacation rentals. And, but that's just kind of conversation in the office. We, we would most likely be able to get some more data to kind of give you actual data on what those numbers be, but you know, just from plainly speaking in the office, that's what we've noticed.
Yeah, because I think it's interesting, the input and the output, right? So how many are coming in? We kind of have had this conversation with cannabis projects, like how many are coming in, what's that demand? How many are approved? How many are in the hopper? And then looking for those trends to know, you know, because overall, we haven't had a very large increase over time since 2017 in a way that maybe I would have predicted there'd be a lot more. So, and I know council has questions about our census numbers and how we have an added population, even though we have developed homes, and I know Mayor Pro Tem Garner raised the question of vacancy, which I have as well, and I thought that that vacancy, excuse me, that housing report from 2010 was really instructive, and I also was interested in those 2020 numbers, too, because then we can look at the overall vacancy and, and understand the supply, supply side of housing in our city. Thank you.
Other questions for, for staff? We're going to be making some comments, and I'm sure that may generate a question or two, so don't go too far. This was some fascinating data that came to us, and I want to kick it, the conversation off, if I may, with one observation that I made in looking through the data, and this goes back to pages 12 and 13 in the report, which identify the number of properties by neighborhood. But what I was also taken by was beyond just simply the density numbers. During the five years since we passed the ordinance in 2017 making revisions, we've grown in the city by a total of 410 new registrations. But if we take just seven neighborhoods in Palm Springs, Racket Club Estates, Takwitz River Estates, Sunrise Park, Desert Park Estates, Gene Autry, Ranch Club Estates, and Vista Norte, those seven neighborhoods count for 270 of the 410 new registrations that we had during the course of five years. And what they are, have in common is, in large part, they are neighborhoods of single-family homes, awful lot of mid-century moderns, not exclusively mid-century moderns, lot sizes a bit smaller than in some other neighborhoods, and affordability in comparison to some other neighborhoods would place them more typically to the middle or maybe even slightly below the middle. Now let's take seven other neighborhoods that are generally identified as less accessible because of cost. Vista Las Palmas, Old Las Palmas, Movie Colony, Mace... Vista Las Palmas, Old Las Palmas, Movie Colony, Mesa, Deepwell, Indian Canyons, and Andreas Hills. During the course of five years, there are a total of 14 more vacation rentals in those seven neighborhoods. And two of the neighborhoods even saw a decline in the number of vacation rentals. I think it, it's hard not to come to the conclusion that the significant number of the vacation rentals that are new in the last five years are investors going into communities where there's the greatest opportunity to get in at what they would consider to be a reasonable cost and make a convert, either a conversion into vacation rental or continuation into vacation rental. But it's a part of the market that I think all of us are concerned about because it has an impact, not only in that market, but affordability below. So it's going to be for the, for that reason. And I know there's a lot more data that we need to be looking at, but measures that would help us be more protective and slow some of the growth in some of these areas, I think, is warranted. And I'll continue on with one more set of comments. Back in 2017, one of the measures that was passed and Councilmember Coors and Councilmember Roberts at the time did incredible work on this, was a requirement that going forward, no one could own more than one home. And that was specifically addressed at trying to minimize the number of individuals that were coming into ownership solely or overwhelmingly for investment purposes, as opposed to what we've all heard about. Individuals that buy a home in Palm Springs, plan to live in Palm Springs on a part-time basis as they transition into full-time living in our community. Those kinds of things do happen in Palm Springs. They happen in resort communities across the country where individuals take into that. I think we may need to beef up some of our restrictions on who can purchase in order to better protect that it is individuals who have some stake in the community in terms of planning to live here for some period of time. And one proposal that I have considered would be, going forward, a requirement that any new permit can only be issued to an individual who is going to live in Palm Springs for at least three months of every year going forward. Those are my mouthfuls, so if anyone else wants to jump in.
Study sessions are interesting because I think it's very reflective, right? We don't, we know we don't have to make a vote right now. It's slower-paced conversation. I think for me, the biggest thing is that housing aspect. And it is very telling when we see that the neighborhoods that have the most increase are neighborhoods that were, used to be moderately priced homes in our city. Desert Park Estates was where I probably, 90% of the families with kids lived when I grew up here. And it is just full of vacation rentals now. And in its, was something where you thought, okay, people will retire, and maybe they'll move out of their homes, and then either children will be able to come back to the community, or maybe other young families will be able to move in. But that hasn't been the case because there's cash offers on homes because it is investors that come in. It's not someone, not most, it doesn't seem to be a lot of individuals, like Mayor Middleton said, who are, who are trying to have a small investment because they love Palm Springs and they live in Palm Springs part of the time. And that's the kind of data and information that I'm also interested is just, how do we determine just how much vacation rentals have impacted our housing market? I think with the bans that we're seeing across the Coachella Valley, it's kind of hard to say because they've all been so recent. So we really don't know how that's going to change the market. Obviously, Palm Springs has the highest home prices, but that's been the case, you know, forever in the Coachella Valley, regardless of whether or not there were vacation rentals. So as we move forward, that's the kind of information I do want to see. What is the impact to Cathedral City now that they've, they're phasing out their vacation rentals? Are we going to see better home prices, lower, which is really lower home prices there? Because for me, this, this is all about housing and making sure that our residents and any new residents actually have a place to live. I know that noise is important to a lot of people, and I don't want to discount that, but the priority for me is, is the housing stock that we have. And I'm very interested in something similar to what Mayor Middleton said in terms of limiting who can have vacation rentals. I am interested in a moratorium for now as we, as we discuss this issue. I think it's, it's tough to, because it takes time to go through all of this and to make changes. I don't want this to continue to go from 2,000 vacation rentals to 2,500 and so on while we're figuring out how we want to proceed. So I do think a moratorium would be helpful. And I also don't want for our long-term residents to not, and not just long-term, but our full-time residents to not be able to take advantage of vacation rental market in the future for their own success. We have a lot of people that are here that are interested in vacation rentals for their homes in the future. You know, maybe they will need to relocate for work, and they want to be able to have a vacation rental. Or maybe the same thing, talking about going on vacation and renting out their homes part of the time. If we, I don't want to be so punitive to the point that those residents can't take advantage of those opportunities. So I think that they should be able to, especially because of people's means and abilities to host change over time. So that's my, my initial thoughts on this. And I do appreciate all of the information and understand that a lot of the information that I've raised today is, is difficult data to find. So I do hope that we can get some of it in the future. And if there is information that we're, or data points that we aren't able to get, if we could just distinguish that as well at the next, the next meeting and so that we can understand why that information isn't available, then go from there.
Councilmember Coors?
Great, thank you. Yeah, I guess one question, Justin, because I think one of the things, it sounds like we're all interested in, if, you know, if we look at both agency and owners of the 2,200 vacation rentals, 515 are rented four or less times. 837, 12 or less. So like 40% are rented once a month or significantly less. I don't know, is it possible to find out what's happening with those houses the rest of the time? Are the people living there, are they doing long-term seasonal rentals? Are they sitting them totally vacant? Is that data we can get? Because it would be, I think, helpful for us if we could. I just wonder if it's possible.
I think getting aggregate census data and looking at trends between 2010 and 2020 is likely by the time they roll out all of the data. I think starting to associate that with individual properties would likely require us doing something more proactive on our end to collect information. So that could include, moving forward, making disclosure of that kind of information required as part of getting a permit. Or we could administer some sort of survey instrument in hopes that we get enough participation that the results are generalizable. But I do think it might be difficult to get that from any other objective source. I don't know of a source that has that kind of information readily available, right? So we'd be trying to get it from the owners themselves in some way, shape, or form. If it was important moving forward, it really seems like making it contingent on the permit would be the best way, but that might not help us looking backward.
And, you know, when you, and you look at the other end, right? You know, if it was 25% are renting 25 to 36, you know, 269 of the homes, you know, is 33 to 36. I know, I advocated 26 as the maximum number of contracts, because I think it starts, when people are renting it out, and if the average is five days each, that much, I just think this is the secondary use of the house, right? And that's sort of what our ordinance says, is this is the secondary use of the house. It's not the primary use. And we don't really have a way, we've been judging that or a way to tell. But, you know, someone was just telling me, in our most saturated neighborhood, they just bought, full-time resident for many years. They just bought a home there because they figure they can rent it out the max times and make money, and it's a good investment. That clearly is against what our ordinance allows, but we don't have any way that we do anything about that currently in the ordinance. So I'd like, you know, some brains thinking about that in the future. What do we do when people are really, these houses are primarily being used as a vacation rental? It's a secondary use. It's not the secondary use anymore. And because that's, you know, it's very different. If someone's renting it out five, six times, and the rest of the time, you know, they're doing seasonal or they're living there, and this helps them pay their mortgage. And I know people have done that, you know, they've gone on vacation, usually in April, and rent out the house for two or three weeks during Coachella and Stagecoach, and they cover a lot of their mortgage. Otherwise, they couldn't live here, right? Including people who work here, they take their vacations deliberately, you know. I wouldn't want to, you know, CS cap those, right? But is there a total number of houses we'd want that are renting it more than that? You know, so that's one of the issues, just that I think we want to come up with, right? Is there a number, and same for neighborhoods? Because, you know, some of the neighborhoods, especially smaller lots, when they start getting that condensed, are going to have more complaints. And it's not always the case. And maybe, you know, when you get to 40% saturation, how many people are left to complain? You may get less complaints, right? Because it's mostly become, you know, it's half a vacation rental neighborhood. I don't think we want to see a 50% neighborhood. I don't think we want to see more than a 20% neighborhood. So, but again, if it's for rentals, I wouldn't feel that. And that's where, I don't know that we can get that data, but we could, you know, have more permits that are fewer if we were going to do some kind of cap, right? Where if you're renting it six times or less, everyone should be able to do that, right? Because that's not a profit-making business at that point. One other thing that I wanted to throw out, which I know Mayor Protem Garner and I have talked about and raised numerous times over the last year and a half, is something that prohibits a home getting a permit for a period of time, I'm thinking two years, after someone who is not a short-term renter was evicted. And, you know, I know there are places, right? If you take the house off the market, right? You can't then put it back on the market for five years as a rental, as a way to avoid people losing eviction so someone can make a profit. And I'd really like to see us do something on that quicker. I don't know how many there are, but I think we've all heard of situations where someone who was a long-term renter was evicted, and it turns into a vacation rental. And that is a real concern because, you know, we want people not to risk losing their house for that purpose if they're renters, I would think. And the other thing is just, you know, continuing to have robust enforcement. That's how this is working. And, you know, finding the people, that we're still finding people who are renting illegally, you know, that we need to stop because if we don't know it's a vacation rental, they're sort of undercutting the whole system. And I'm glad those numbers are going down, but they still exist. And I appreciate all the work that goes into finding those folks. So those are just my general, general comments.
Councilmember Holsich?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I share the concern about the rental market and the supply of affordable and attainable housing. And we've just seen housing prices for sale spike, and rental prices go up significantly over the last five years. That is happening throughout California. And so I think what we need to do is really think about and look at the long-term data for the housing market. I'm really interested in like multifamily development and what we can do to increase supply. I mean, fundamentally, this is a supply question. And, you know, my question is, if we were to do a ban, which I don't support and I don't think voters support, if all of those units came online, would that reduce the housing cost in Palm Springs? Or would other investors buy it for their other second home? I mean, we've always been a tertiary or secondary market. We've always had out-of-town, you know, seasonal renters, seasonal owners. And so I think it's just a question of like causation and, you know, impacts to the market. But I share, I very much share the concern about gentrification. Mayor Middleton pointed out some of the neighborhoods, which that was really instructive. Thank you, Mayor. Some that I pointed out for myself when reading this was Demuth Park, which is a historically lower-income neighborhood in the city of Palm Springs, or Veterans Track. Communities of color, some people who've been here for, you know, generations. In 2017, that was 38, and now it's 91. So that's almost tripling the number. Lawrence Crosley, there were two in 2017, or two in 2018, four in 2019, and then nine in 2021. And then same thing, Desert Highlands Gateway, one or 111 for 2017, 2018, 2019, and then nine in 2021. And so those are really small numbers, so you can't say it's, you know, going up by nine times. But those, to me, are concerning trends about gentrification and pushing out long-term residents and families in our community. So I also care about tenant protections for long-term tenants. You know, I know some cities have done, you know, tenant relocation assistance for no-fault evictions, like if you're being evicted because they changed the use. Other tenant protections, you know, because if investors are coming in and making $50,000, $100,000 in profit on a home, and then pushing out residents and the tenant, you know, has nowhere to go, and then prices are double or triple somewhere else. And this, most of my comments about this are about the housing crisis. And again, I think the impacts we really need to analyze because some cities like Grinch Mirage, actually, I think we could look at Palm Desert because they've banned for a long enough time now that we could look and see, you know, what are their impacts to their rental or their housing market? I think what we'll see is those are still going up a lot, and we probably couldn't piece out a difference for the cities. And again, are we just going to lose out on TOT because, you know, those are going to be vacant? But those are the data questions that we can try to pull out. Because I am worried about vacancy. I know, remember, Councilmember Foote said when the council first approved this ordinance, that before it, she actually said she'd rather have vacation rentals on her street than vacant homes. And if you can remember back in 2010 or earlier, you know, in one of the recessions that we faced, so many vacant homes, and that not being a contribution to the community, right? So it's a balance there of, you know, if we do limits, is it just going to go to vacancy and other investors? Or is it truly going to go to long-term tenants, which is what we really want? You know, other cities have done like incentives for workforce housing or incentives for landlords to rent out long-term. So, you know, I think like our housing policy would be how to really incentivize long-term housing rentals and supply side, just, you know, building more housing. So those are kind of the, the comments that I have. I am interested in like what the public process is for these conversations. I know Councilmember Coors is the only one who was here when the council decided in 2017. I know you're in I know you're an instrumental part in that ordinance and how it was written. So, you know, how can we engage in with the realtors and some of the other stakeholders in talking about what are the drivers for the housing crisis in Palm Springs and, you know, what are the ways that we can influence that? That's what I'm, I'm interested in. But I, you know, I'm interested in all the questions that council raised and looking forward to a discussion with all the stakeholders.
Councilmember Kors?
Yeah. Do want to note, because when we went through a very challenging time during COVID, how TOT from vacation rentals was so important when the hotels were closed and how much we would have had a cut otherwise. And it looks like it's on track for another around $15 million year, which is 10-plus percent of our budget. And just an awareness, right? That banning them, which some people have always wanted, cutting out 10% of your budget with all the things that our community wants us to do, all right? More public safety and more parks and more pickleball and tennis courts. And, I mean, the list is endless. And, you know, we want a heast and road repairs. There are real impacts, right? When you make that kind of cut. And I appreciate the call, but it isn't all about money, right? But money is a big factor in how you run a city. And without it, you have to make tough decisions. And that doesn't mean you don't make changes to address concerns. You do. But I just want, you know, that's in the staff report. I don't think it went into detail in the report, so, in the oral presentation. So I want to make sure just to highlight that for the public. And I, so from a staff perspective, you know, I'm thinking we're throwing some broad concepts, right, out. And so what is most helpful? I mean, it sounds, right, this has been a suggestion of maybe we don't issue permits as we're trying to figure stuff out. Suggestion of maybe it's a working group that includes, right, residents, including neighborhood organizations, right? At the table with people who have their own homes that they rent and the agencies that rent and the realtors, you know, sort of as a working group to look at this. So I'm just thinking like, I mean, I could get into, you know, lots more detail of some ideas I have, but it doesn't sound like we're quite at that stage. So I'm just sort of curious, Mayor, if you have thoughts on how we move this forward or the city manager, both of you.
Justin, do you want to offer any comments at this point?
Sure. Certainly continued process by way of a working group and engagement of stakeholders makes sense to me, especially in the areas where some of the policy direction might be a little more ambiguous. So for instance, if there was interest in trying to really solidify that this activity would be more of a secondary use instead of a primary, that's a pretty broad, open-ended area that we could explore. In other instances, if we were to consider something like a cap in neighborhoods, again, that's much more straightforward. So it might be eventually up to council to kind of assess and decide where that cap should be. But even that, we could take to a working group to, you know, at least vet where we think, you know, numbers might fall and the rationale and to kind of vet that further. So I think that strikes me as a good way to both get engagement and to kind of flesh out some of the detail with some of these issues a little more. But that said, still helpful that if council is fairly resolved in certain concepts, like a cap or exploring certain areas that many of you have touched on individually and some have agreed, but we maybe want to revisit and make sure that there's broader consensus. All of that direction helps to keep that working group and any other stakeholder engagement focused.
What I think I'm hearing from my colleagues is we've got some broad directions, but we'd like more data, more information, more feedback before narrowing down to specific policy recommendations. Is that accurate? So, and perhaps what would be useful moving forward this evening is to flesh out some of that very broadly and not try to get too specific with proposals that would then allow Justin and the team to engage with stakeholders and come back to us with recommendations that would allow us to have some policy choices as we implement this. It would also give some more time. I think it'd be really helpful to be reaching out broadly to individuals who are a part of the real estate market, the vacation rental industry, neighborhood groups, and those who very strongly believe that vacation rentals are not an appropriate use in our, our city. We need to engage a conversation that's broad-based. One concern I have, if I heard the number correctly, we've got 76 applications in process right now. That compares with an increase from 21, 2021 to 2022 of only 30 properties. And it is not unusual when subject matters such as this gets set for the agenda, that there is a ramping up of people buying properties and trying to get in before we make any changes. I would not want to impact anyone who is currently in escrow. But I also am really nervous about triggering some kind of mass increase in properties being purchased and applications being made in the next weeks or months as we are debating these issues. And this would be a question for the city attorney, but what, what opportunities do we have to take and make a statement along the lines of we will be accepting applications for properties currently in escrow, but not accepting applications going forward while we are studying this issue for properties that are not currently in escrow?
If the council gives this direction, we can certainly bring back a moratorium ordinance that would be effective immediately. And you could set parameters like that in that type of a moratorium if the council would like.
Is that something we, we would have the opportunity to vote on at our next city council meeting?
We could probably make that work. The agenda deadline for that is going out on Thursday, but if the council directs us to, we could put that together. The ordinance itself may not be available by Thursday, but we could certainly put the staff report together and have it, have it before the council next, by next Thursday if you direct us to.
Councilmember Kors?
I have a question, Veronica or Patrick. So I can ask it in the morning if you can get up, if you want. So of those 31, do you have, and I thought, I think you didn't, but if you do, are those homes that are vacation rentals that are simply transferring ownership or are those new people who have never, the house has never, not been a vacation rental before?
And you're speaking with respect to who we have in the queue right now?
Yeah.
They're not transfers. Yeah, these would be new applications.
Okay, new, okay. No, that's helpful information to know.
What was the number you said? That's in the queue?
I believe it was 76. I can definitely get you the accurate number. I was just recalling off a conversation we had earlier today.
And how long? I'm sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I just jump in. ADD things. So how long do they stay in the queue?
Our current application period is 90 days right now. So we'll process that application before the 90-day mark. So hopefully it would be issued by then.
Want to point out though, that in addition to new applications, we have closures to be processed. So there is a balancing there. So there might be 76 new to be processed, but we also have 30 or 40 to be closed. So we can get that data for you as well to show that the impact isn't as great as it sounds off. There are 76 in queue to be opened.
Right. And I mean, that's the data we need, I think, in analyzing that is, you know, what's been that, like, I said input and output, but that's not the right word. What's the, you know, queue and then what's the loss of units over time? Because it hasn't increased that much over time, but we want to know if there is a significant increase.
Yeah, we can definitely pull that together. I know we looked at that during the COVID crisis when we saw additional applications coming in. But by the time you weigh out the new applications versus the closure, it wasn't a significant increase.
That's certainly helpful to know that we've got the closures. It's not quite as alarming a number, but just from a policy standpoint, I don't believe it would be fair to change rules for people who are already in the application process, already in escrow.
But you, are you allowed to apply for a vacation rental permit if you're in escrow?
You have to have title because if you submit an application, but you're in escrow, it's very difficult to process because you most likely weren't going to have the insurance. We can't verify the ownership. This is where we look, because we spend a lot of time verifying that they do not own any of the other vacation rentals, even if it's in LLC or a trust. We ask for all members, we compare. So it's a, that's why we have that 90-day processing period. It takes a lot of staff time. And if you accept them during escrow, it just, it's an incomplete application. We don't have that information to verify.
Thank you. I just wanted to say to clarify, I think you were on the same page, Mayor, but I, for the public, I wanted to clarify that term of phrase. I just, one thing I wanted to just comment on, I know we, we've shifted, but I want to go back a little bit to the gentrification discussion. I think it's, it is, it is really telling and those neighborhoods as well that, that Councilmember Holsidge mentioned are, are seeing changes. There was a, there is a, a popular vacation rental in Desert Highlands Gateway Estates that just sold for $1 million. And I, I have just been shocked to know that there is a house in that area that sold for $1 million and it's traditionally been our most affordable area to live in. And, but this vacation rental has been so popular that I imagine that it sold to somebody else who will probably, you know, continue to use it as a vacation rental. But to think that there's a vacation rental in that neighborhood that is so lucrative that someone can buy it for $1 million and, you know, I mean, that's, that's quite shocking, which is why I would really like to see us use a percentage of the TOT that we get from vacation rentals to directly support our neighborhoods and our communities and, and to support housing. You know, housing is not a human right. It, it should be, but it's not. And so we are in this situation where we do need the money that comes from things like this in order to provide housing subsidies and support because we cannot trust the market to allow for everyone to be housed. The market is a serious failure, in, in my opinion, in terms of allowing people to live with dignity, not just in Palm Springs, but across our country. So I would like to, to see us really focus in our upcoming budget discussions about how we want to use that TOT funding to support our, our residents. Thank you. No one heard you. So no error there. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. So I raised this publicly in this discussion about how to mitigate the impacts, I think not of just vacation rentals, but hotels as well or anything generating TOT comes with jobs, often low-wage work or, you know, other impacts. And so one issue that our city is facing is that we don't have a dedicated revenue source for our housing fund. And we've publicly said that we're, we've spent almost all of our housing fund and we have a small amount left. And because the state took away redevelopment, you know, we don't see a revenue source there. So I had raised that and I agree, looking at, you know, if we can set aside a portion of our TOT revenue or we could just set aside part of our general fund as, you know, resolution from council, knowing, you know, that, that every hotel we develop or vacation rentals that come online require a certain amount of jobs to be functional. And so it should be mitigated because we have to provide workforce housing in addition to the economic development and other housing that we're doing. So a way to do that and make sure that they're really, we're getting, getting there and providing workforce housing would be to do a set aside of TOT or an increase, though they just did an increase, so that we could have a revenue stream for our, for our housing fund. It could be something else, too. Council could just set aside it like we've done for road repairs or what have you. But I'm really supportive of finding an income stream for housing so we can develop workforce housing. Because at the end of the day, I know council's considering inclusionary zoning and other measures, but fundamentally, this is a supply issue. And we just need a significant amount more housing, especially workforce and middle income and low income. So I'm really supportive of, of doing that. And I'm wondering if, I know we scheduled out a few of our study sessions, but I'm hearing a lot of concern about the housing crisis. And I just want to make sure that we, they're related, but, you know, separate out or also discuss more deeply what are those tenant protections broadly? Because I talked about tenant protections for vacation rentals, but broadly, right? What are those housing policies that we can bring forward? Because it is a crisis for everyone, for all renters, even for cities that have no vacation rentals. You know, prices are still going up and it is a crisis. So I'd love to see us study those issues more in depth and really bring forward policy to protect tenants and find funding to develop new housing.
One of the things that we did a few years ago was to prohibit an apartment from being converted to a vacation rental. I, from a public policy standpoint, see no reason why we could not extend that to single-family homes that are being used in the rental market that, for long-term rental, that they cannot be converted to short-term rental. What we don't know is how many homes that would impact and where those homes are. My sense is that is the kind of policy that would have broad support on council.
And I think just getting, and it ties in with that, just what is, really looking at, right? What fits in ancillary use, right? A secondary use. And, because we're not, other than the number of contracts, we're not really clear on that. And now that we know contracts are, on average, five days, it gives us a little more information. But looking at some options around that, right? Because we don't want people buying homes in lower, for Palm Springs, price neighborhoods who are never going to use it. Because that is clearly not a secondary use of that house. It is the primary use of that house. And just, you know, thought a little bit about how we might do that, but just a little. So just, you know, thinking about that and for the city attorney, because, you know, that's how our ordinance was able to stay, is because it's not the primary use. It's not business first. It's someone's home that they're using first. Just thinking that through a little and that could be something, you know, some ideas that would be good to bring back.
Mayor Protam?
Thank you. And I really think this is an important point to talk about the secondary use because up until, I don't know, a month ago, I didn't know that, right? There are so many vacation rentals in our city that are, they're businesses. This is, they are businesses. They advertise that way. It is very clear. So if, I guess my question is how are we vetting it? Have we moved away from that? Have we, has it just become more difficult to figure out or is it just very easy to kind of loophole? I, I don't know. I mean, it's, and I'm also just curious if we do need to do anything in terms of further enforcement at all. For instance, there's four units that I saw recently that have vacation rental operations, but I believe four units are not allowed to have vacation rentals because they're considered an apartment, right? But they're currently operating as a vacation rental. And I can, I can give more details on where that was and all of that to you later. But, you know, do, do But Veronica and Patrick, do you need additional support in figuring out things like that that are happening? Because I know that your team is always working really hard to figure out this kind of stuff, but I don't know if you need more support.
We currently have one vacation rental compliance officer on staff, who does search for unregistered vacation rentals. So it is very taxing. He's also responsible for all the inspections, for new vacation rentals and for renewals. So it is very taxing. I have a wonderful staff. They are phenomenal. They themselves will go online to assist, to find unregistered rentals, and give the tips to him. I mean, they're very hardworking. But it is difficult due to the amount out there that we know are happening. We do search more as festival season is approaching. This is one of the best times to look for unregistered rentals, because you see new ads popping up all the time. So it is difficult, and some additional support would be helpful, I believe.
Thank you so much.
One of the things that we've certainly seen in the last few years is enforcement, and the commitment we've made to enforcement really does make a difference. That's both our commitment, but also the individuals who, for the most part, are owning vacation rentals in Palm Springs, recognize that the rules are going to be enforced, and therefore, they're proactively responding. And that makes all the difference in the world, because problems are not taking and emerging. I think what we're trying to do here is get some balances correct. But I do want to go back to something that Councilmember Coors said. There is an economic impact, and it's not just simply that it produces revenue that the city has. The number of visitors that we have coming into our community is creating jobs, is creating entrepreneurial opportunities for people to open new businesses. We have, we are receiving an incredible number of compliments from practically everyone who's new coming into Palm Springs, about how vital and exciting our downtown is. And I think all of us take pride in that. And the full-time residents, we're getting opportunities to have choices in entertainment and culture that we would not have but for this impact. So there are benefits across the board, but we've got to get these things balanced in a way that those benefits are not producing negative impacts on our community, and on the ability of people to live in this community.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to add that, since we're discussing and studying the issue, one thing, we had talked a little bit about people connected to the community, and I think about this in sort of future-looking, like decades perspective, right? Because I know what we're seeing now, and this is a statewide housing crisis, and we're impacted by other regions. So what I think we're seeing, and I love the data, whatever we can get, even just from the Realtors, about trends, about who's buying, they probably have, who's buying vacation rentals. C-Vep maintains a lot of this data about the market. But what I think you're seeing, at least, I'll speak for my generation, is a lot of people who are in their 30s or early 40s, who have collected, who have saved some money, but cannot buy a home in the markets that they live, San Francisco, LA, coastal communities. And so what I think we're seeing is those people who do have a nest egg, and they might be LGBTQ, they might love Palm Springs, they might have various reasons for wanting to be here. And then what I'm seeing is that they're often buying homes, and then they can't afford it on their own, just to have a second home, along with their rental in the urban area they live. And so they're kind of investing in this way. And so I just want to not push back, but just talk about the long-term ownership in Palm Springs, and the long-term residents and communities. And I think that's what we've seen over time, right? That's the trend, but it's happening earlier because of the housing crisis, and people just being totally pushed out of markets. And then now we're seeing with remote work, people being able to actually live here and come and go. So I think it's hard, it's really complex, because we're so impacted by those housing markets. But yeah, I think that, yeah, I'm so glad that Councilmember Coors, that you, I think you pushed for the limit on not having multifamily. I think that was really smart public policy, looking back, because I think we would have lost a lot of rental opportunities. And just thinking through, like, how do we make sure, and your limit on LLCs, and actually knowing the true owner, and making sure it's not, what we're seeing is real estate investment firms buying up huge swaths of some cities. We're not seeing that. So just thinking through, like, how do we know it's real people versus investors? But knowing that it doesn't have to be Palm Springs residents, because those are our future residents, and we have to think long-term like that in this market.
If you go back to the height of the recession, when there was just numerous vacant homes everywhere, and in a state of significant disrepair, an awful lot of individuals, investors, came in, invested in the community, they've turned a very nice profit from what they've done, and there has been community benefit. But we're not in the midst of a significant recession today. We're in the opposite. And the value that is brought to the community simply from having folks who do not plan to live here at all, isn't as great as it was a dozen years ago. And I think it's appropriate for us to take measures today that, in this kind of market, that places a preference on those who are going to be spending at least some significant part of each year living here in Palm Springs. Councilmember Coors.
No, I think that's a good point. And also, when that recession hit, the first people who sort of walked away were people who were able to walk away from their homes without a consequence, right? Because they were so underwater. And there were some full-time residents, but it's sort of the second homes that really impacted us, right? People who lived here still tried to figure out how to make it work. So I mean, I think there's a lot of interesting conversation. I do agree, and it is related to this, committing to figuring out how we're going to build workforce and attainable housing, not just officially low-income housing, but attainable housing. And that can be done with minimum 30-day rentals, right? We've done that on some projects, where you can't make it a vacation rental, moving forward. I think there's really an opportunity to set some policy on what we want to do moving forward, that I think could really have a positive impact. So, it's related, but not this exact question. But I do think, from a policy, it's not just money, and without money, we're not going to have that kind of housing, because you have to give incentives, and we have to try and figure that out. But it's also the policy that those, housing that is supported that way can't be used as vacation rentals, because that, and I don't think there'd be a lot of pushback on that, right? So I think that's one thing we definitely can look at. And just for the city attorney, as you think a little bit about what really gets us into an ancillary use, and just making sure we have some way where even letting people know, right? Like, it is that you're going to be utilizing this house. Whether you're renting it out six months of the year, in a part-term rental, that's still using it primarily for something other than short-term vacation rentals. And just thinking that through, because I agree with you, people, there's a lot of discussion, but that's five years ago. And really thinking through how that would work, I think it will be helpful.
Certainly.
So maybe for Councilmember Coors, or maybe for staff, so when the, I'm trying to remember back in 2017, it's been a while. So, I know I wasn't on council. So, the reason that the number of total contracts was chosen is sort of the limit on use versus the number of days or amount of time? Can you describe that? And then I heard you say that you pushed for 26. Could you just clarify for us and everyone?
Sure. The idea of doing it by contracts, which I don't think anyone else had done at that point, was, you're not renting it out 52 weekends a year, right? Which was impacting residents, and also meant you weren't really using it if you was getting rented out three-day weekends or two-day weekends almost every week. So 26, half the weeks, seemed like the right number. Various reasons that there wasn't support for that, and signature gathering that stopped the ordinance from getting into effect, and negotiations, and trying to get both sides to a compromise, which came very close, but one still brought a ballot measure. But that was the goal of that, right? To come up with this way of looking at it. So that was the thought, as opposed to, you know, some cities have done 90 days or 180 days. But if you're only renting out every weekend, and you're letting it sit vacant all week, that wasn't that helpful.
Yeah. It's interesting. Thanks.
Are we to a point of trying to summarize for staff our broad areas of agreement? Our investigation? Or ask staff to read?
Summarize for us? That would be much faster.
Ask them to read back to us? Thank you.
So, Mayor and Council, I've been keeping a few notes as we go, and they're not in any particular order at this point, I haven't had time to categorize them, but we have the issue of further exploring secondary versus ancillary use, and maybe a couple of ideas that have been tossed out. I won't get into some of the specifics, because that gets into my notes, but just a variety of ways that we might look at that issue. More data on the impact of housing, which really may be something more like a housing study. We could glean some anecdotal evidence from surrounding communities and things, but really a lot of this relates to understanding housing problem and housing strategies, addressing or at least examining concentration. Look potentially into prohibiting people from renting within a certain time if it's been previously occupied by a long-term rental tenant. So again, kind of housing-related policy. These notes would need to be cleaned up, right? But some I'm hearing specific ideas, and some are just broader concepts. Keeping our enforcement efforts robust, and perhaps looking at ways that we might assist the department, so that their resources can be directed towards that effort and other administrative efforts. Looking at long-term data with the housing market, again, what's really driving cost, second homeownership versus vacation rentals, et cetera. Increasing supply, which is slightly separate, but understanding how vacation rentals impact that issue. Other tenant protections, which is, again, venturing a little into housing. Examining kind of a public process, where we want to have active engagement from stakeholders from a variety of perspectives on this issue, likely coming together in a working group, but soliciting input more broadly than just a working group. Looking at other strategies that might be on the periphery, but things like assigning TOT or other sources for housing. Looking at issues with unregistered rentals, if we still have any of those. And I think that broadly kind of encapsulates, there's a lot of smaller nuance within that, that I think we would want to explore some of the specific policy suggestions. But really, it's secondary ancillary use, housing impacts, and a lot of engagement with stakeholders to kind of vet more thoroughly our policy options.
That sounds good to me. I think the one area that we really need to take a look at is making sure that we do not set off a surge in people purchasing homes and trying to get in before any changes are made.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also wanted to just offer support to Councilmember Holstich's comments about wanting to have a study session on housing. And obviously, Justin, you just mentioned that, I think, several times throughout. I do support that, and I think it would be, there's a lot of things that we could go into tonight, that I think we all kind of avoided going into too many details, but obviously, it's a really needed discussion.
Councilmember Holstich?
Just offer quickly on that point, if I may. I did take the liberty of kind of looking at some of our work plans in our four-month summary. We did anticipate that this conversation would likely continue to another meeting or two. Depending on how robust the engagement is, that might be a little broader. And then within the housing topic, we do have a number of things that are segues to the conversation, perhaps not at the scale of another study session, but housing element and some other conversations that are on the agenda for the four-month timeframe, and then budget conversations as well, where we'll look at sources and uses and financing. And so somewhere on that near horizon, I do think those items would coalesce into something of the scale of a study session, and kind of look holistically at that topic.
Councilmember Holstich?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I do think they're related, because I think it's easy to attribute the housing crisis just to vacation rentals, or even assume that, I just don't want to make assumptions. I really want to know between housing impacts and this whole conversation. And we're not going to be able to piece it and say it's 25% of the impact, but have more information than what we do now while we're legislating that. With the summary, I just wanted to add one more thing, if there's support from council. I heard Councilmember Coors and Mayor Middleton talk about TOT impacts, and tourism, and jobs. And so just want to think through tourism data. Because I think we're in this situation, respectfully to our neighboring cities, is that we know that the Coachella Valley doesn't have enough hotel rooms for large festivals and events and seasons. And so we do rely on vacation rental stock unless we develop a lot more hotels, but there's, it's a seasonality thing. And so, understanding, like, what is the overall demand for units, to understand how that's impacting the demand in Palm Springs? Because we could do it overall in the Coachella Valley. What I'm concerned is seeing all these cities take, in my opinion, extreme measures to ban or do moratoriums, really significantly increases the demand for vacation rentals in Palm Springs. And that's what scares me, is are we going to have to fill that gap, and we just don't have the housing stock to do it? So I would ask if council supports that, including a conversation on tourism and data from the CVB, which Councilmember Coors chairs, to understand what that demand and supply side is for tourism.
And that's actually being studied right now, and I think per city. So there's some of that data initially, but we won't have to do that study, Justin. So I think that may be helpful. So, you know, anyone who knows we're having this conversation, I think it'd also have the opposite effect, right? Because some cities that have banned vacation rentals, you had a year, and then you were banned. So if you're looking to buy it primarily as a vacation rental, just this conversation is going to keep some people off. But we should just be conscious, if a conversation about a moratorium, which is a fine conversation, probably should be first, some high-level outreach with the Realtors to sort of get their sense. Because when, I wasn't one of them, but two councilmembers brought that in 2017, and we had about four hours of public comment, people waiting outside, and they decided it was not a good idea. So, just so we have some outreach, maybe, to the head of the Board of the Realtors Association, and a couple of conversations, and just so people can weigh in. And 200 people applied for permits, thinking they needed to get in under the wire if they want to ever rent their house out. So, I do think we want, we need some window to talk. So I appreciate the desire, but I think we should have that conversation, that we need some window. So we're not doing anything quick to avoid that situation, but I think maybe some conversations might be helpful, if that is good. Or we could bring it back for discussion, and ask the organizations, like a little mini-study session for a half hour only before a council meeting or something, where we have some folks, or the heads of the organizations, that we can have a conversation with or something. I'm just trying to think how we can have that conversation in a way that doesn't cause
I think having that kind of conversation as soon as possible would be very helpful. I hope the public is taking away from the conversation that we've had today, that we're trying to trying to act tactically and act in a fashion that is, is balanced. We're not trying to make radical change here in any direction.
And just a suggestion, if it's good, that maybe, given you worked a lot on this when you were head of 1PS during that year, but whether it's Justin, whose plate is full or your plate is full, you know, maybe having a couple of those conversations, you know, with the Realtors and some others to just get a sense on how we can have this window and start talking about a working group. So they, you know, we're not talking about, no one's mentioned the word ban or anything along those lines, right? We're not looking to do something that wholesale. I haven't heard anyone go near that. But I think that was part of the concern before too, right? Where could this go? Because there was a very active group in 2017 really pushing a ban. And so I think that caused some of the concern. But I, let's at least have that, not spring it on folks and have that conversation. And then before we bring anything back to council like that, which can be very quick, right? It could be in a meeting or two.
Seems to me we're talking about how do we grow sensibly and grow in a, in a measured way.
Is that personal or just emotionally? We all need to grow sensibly? If we're done at 7:15, we feel like we've, we've grown in how we run our meetings, so that's good.
No, you know, I think all of us were, and I'm glad that Councilmember Holstidge added to Moth Park, I missed that, to the list. What we saw is in the last, in the first part of this past decade, there was a tremendous amount of growth in some pretty popular neighborhoods, but because of the recession, they were very accessible in the last half of this decade. The growth has been in communities that have traditionally been our most accessible neighborhoods, and that's, that's a policy concern moving forward.
I mean, there's some neighborhoods that were built for full-time residents and some that were more built for vacation rentals. And those were the ones that were accessible for a period.
Right.
That are much tougher now, right? So, good point.
We have, do you have the direction you need?
We have the direction we need.
All right. One of the questions Justin did have to do with timing. When do you expect to come back to us with recommendations?
I'd like to visit with our team a little bit and think about a schedule for a working group. These are somewhat larger topics, right? Especially when you get into something like a variety of policies that might reinforce this as an ancillary use. And, and so I'd like to visit with the team and think about how many times we might need to work with a working group, but it takes a little while to compose one thoughtfully that is balanced in perspectives and diverse, so that we get a robust conversation that hopefully is reflective of the broader tension we have in the community with this conversation, so that the kinds of compromises that might be made at that table are likely to also resonate with people on multiple sides of the issue more broadly. And for them to meet a handful of times and come back, I mean, that's, that's probably a few months to really do this thoughtfully. There might be some things we do in the meantime. For instance, we heard about maybe getting some perspective from Realtors on any emerging trends or current trends in the market, so that we know if there's any other temporary measures that might be needed. So we might have some touchpoints there, but, and then we would also have to decide whether or not to bring this back in bits and pieces as the working group is completing its, its work, or whether or not to bring you a complete set of recommendations. So we'd need to think that through, but needless to say, it wouldn't be at either of the next two or three or any of the next two or three or four meetings likely, as we assemble that group and get started.
Is there anything further? And we will adjourn until our next regular city council meeting on April 7, 2022. A reminder to the public that in April, we're meeting on the first and third Thursdays instead of our normal second and fourth Thursdays. We are adjourned until 5:30, April 7.